Capital projects. Seeing none, we move on to Article Six. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from taxation and sewer user fees, three hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars for the ensuing year for debt service. Debt service, like a home budget, we have to plan what we will spend each year on our loans. That's what this article does, it sets money aside so we can pay our loans. We're required to vote on this article every year so we can set an accurate tax rate. Uh, the sewer department loans as listed in here are paid by the sewer users only, not from general taxation. Do we have any questions on Article Six? Yes, Mark?
Not selected question, this is a comment. We also received money back from Jay for the last three loans that are listed.
Okay.
So the total debt service for the sewer department is three hundred and thirty-one thousand three hundred and four dollars. But we received reimbursement from Jay for their share of the wastewater treatment facility upgrade.
Okay.
Of a hundred and twenty-four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. So that isn't shown here because this is a Livermore Falls debt. But half of that is paid back by the Jay sewer users. So the overall net sewer department debt that would be paid would be two hundred and six thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars by the Livermore Falls sewer users. It is a considerable difference and it is Jay paying their share of the sewer treatment plan. The first two loans that are listed there is WWTF loans. Those are actually for the sewer collection system in Jay. I believe the first one, both of those loans were before I came. But I believe the first one was for pump stations and transmission line over Golden, Full Meadows. I'm not exactly positive on that though. And the main street, uh, upgrade, that, that is what the five thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollar repayment is for. Most of that was done with grant money back when that was done, so. That's what those two are, those are not WWTF loans, but they are sewer department loans. Paid back by the sewer users whole, not general taxation. Very important that we pay these loans. We have approximately ten million dollars that we've borrowed from the state SRF program, DEP. We have a representative here tonight from the DEP SRF program, Mr. Robert Hartley. And if there are any questions on what happens to us if we do not pay them back, I hope Bob is prepared to field those questions. But basically, it could turn our grants into loans. So what we have currently at sixteen million dollars in grant, that could transfer it to loan. Right now, the town of Livermore Falls be paying back just under two point five million dollars on the wastewater treatment facility upgrades. If we don't make our payments on time, if this article does not pass, it's not a threat, just stating the fact that there is a chance we could lose our grant sources of income. If we do that, we will be end up paying back instead of two and a half million. We'll pay back approximately eighteen and a half million. It's not, I'm not threatening, I'm just saying these are loans that we took, these are loans that the town had approved when we took the loans. And now we have to pay it back. We don't want to default on these or it will be very expensive for our sewer users. Does anybody have any questions on that?
You say you have to pay it back, does that include the whole town now or just the sewer users?
The, the way it works is the sewer users are paying this back. But this is a debt for the town of Livermore Falls.
Everybody.
So if the town of Livermore Falls defaults on this debt, it will affect the entire town of Livermore Falls. And their ability to bond in the future, borrow money, et cetera. Not only with the main bond bank, but I would assume local financial institutions would not look favorably on that. Did I miss anything, Bob?
Uh, I was just gonna say that the, uh, more recently, there's been around ten and a half million dollars of funding that's been supplied. Of that, around six point seven million has been what we call principal forgiveness, or there's no payback on. Some people use the term grant, but legally, it's called something different. Around three point seven million in loans which are included in what's being paid back. So, at the DEP, we support what the town is doing at their, at their plant. And some of those upgrades have been long overdue. So, every time you flush a toilet, whether it's your house or you're visiting somebody, it's going there and being treated so that we're not dumping sewage into the river. So, I would urge passing this article. For the reasons Bob mentioned, there would be some bad things that could happen if this is not paid. Legally, financially. If the treatment plant is not treating the sewage to the proper levels, if they're not doing their required testing, there are penalties that can be, uh, brought forth. So, if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them, otherwise, continue on, Chairman.
I have questions. I would like to know more about the fines that are gonna happen, um, if the sewer department isn't running. I'd like to know more about, you know, if no one's there checking things and adding things, what the fines are gonna look like going forward.
So, it depends on the violation. And the fines can run anywhere from a hundred dollars to ten thousand dollars per day per violation. So, for each day, if they're not testing their effluent, it's another ten thousand dollars. For each day, the other criteria in the license are not met, would be another fine. So, it would add up quickly.
To quantify that, I looked at our license today. We run approximately twenty-five tests per month, uh, per week rather. So, the maximum penalty of ten thousand dollars per day, that would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollar a week possible fine or penalty.
Okay, that's helpful.
And the way that would be implemented, that is not out of debt service. That would be related to, I believe it's Article Four, Carrie, the benefits line. Without the benefits line being funded, we won't have employees. They will go to other jobs before that happens. We are currently operating on three twelfths of last year's budget. Therefore, when that runs out, or October first, we could be without employees if they don't have benefits. So, that's a real possibility. If that happens, um, I have a letter from Greg Wood, the director of Water Quality Management at DEP. And he does list, as Bob stated in his letter, fines that range from one hundred to ten thousand dollars per day per violation. And it also says that if we were to do this and discharge water intentionally that was not treated and not performed test, these fines would be looked at in a harsh manner. Again, I am not here threatening you, saying you have to pass this. I am just telling you what's going to happen if we don't. I want the voters to be informed of their decision. If they think that not passing these is gonna save the town money, it's actually gonna cost the town money. Unfortunately.
Thank you, Mark. Do you have any other comment on Article Six?
With that explanation, I would say that Article Six is on par with debt service. If we don't vote yes and pay these bills, the repercussions are gonna be severe. And I know I spoke up about debt service and some people took it as a threat. What Mr. Holt said, there's threats and there's common sense. And I think common sense outweigh, especially on debt service and Article Six.
I mean, I too, I'd just like to urge people to, uh, to vote yes on things they would like to vote yes on and, you know. Hopefully they will pass some of these, some of these items. We've gone through some cutting and tried to make some changes, an attempt at that. Um, and hopefully that is enough to get people to pass these. Yes, Mark?
I'd also like to say, if anybody has any questions, they can give me a call or call the town manager. She has the same answers that I do, I'm sure. But if you need education, don't understand how we build our budgets, why our budgets are what they are, we will answer any and all questions and back it up with the facts so that you don't feel as though we're doing a snowball.
Thank you, Mark. So that is covering the vote of the warrant in, on August thirteenth. We'll be voting here from eight to eight. And, uh, yeah, is there any other comment?
I just wanna remind people that it is a Wednesday. Typically, we vote on Tuesdays, but, um, because we had something else scheduled on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, that leaves the only day available is on Wednesday, so it is Wednesday the thirteenth, from eight until eight.
All right. So, not seeing any further comment, I will close this to clear the public hearing closed. We will be moving directly into the select board meeting this evening. Let's see, we have our forum. First up, we have approval of the minutes for July first, twenty twenty-five. Do we have any comment or changes that would like to be made to the minutes? Not seeing any, I move to approve the minutes for July first, twenty twenty-five.
I second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Next, we have July fourteen, twenty twenty-five minutes. I'll move that we approve the minutes for July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Second. Discussion, all those in favor? Three, four, do we have any against? Any abstaining? Disposed? And Bruce was not here. All right, up next, we have July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five minutes. I move to approve the minutes for July twenty, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Discussion, all those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Up next, under old business, we have citizens petition. We received petition and we received a good number of paperwork on it. Now we have to figure out what we'd like to do with it. When's the vote in November? The fourth or the fifth, the fourth?
Uh, you don't have the calendar, is that a place? Fourth.
November fourth. So. So, if anybody's not familiar with the petition, we had the petition brought in to deal with some amendments to our buildings. The development standard ordinance, so.
Which we are amending regardless because of L D.
Right. So.
Which means we'll have to vote on it again, correct? If, if we, if this passes and we vote on this, then go vote to the people again.
Correct.
Or we have the choice to make a committee of five people to go over this ordinance. And including a citizen and pretty much clean it up a little bit and incorporate everything. From what we need to what the state needs and then.
That's an option, but, I mean, the, the issue before you is to either accept or reject the petition.
Right, the petition's been put before us, we have the legal analysis and we have what that shows us as far as the petition. And our choice tonight is whether we want to approve or reject it for the November vote.
It's only my opinion, but if you're gonna put together a committee anyway, look at and discuss changes to an ordinance that is gonna have to be readdressed anyway because the state has made some things that will make it our business to change it. I would say we either table or reject the petitions, put together a committee and do it right and complete through the committee. Not a motion, that's just my opinion.
And I have a totally opposite opinion. Having read the note from our legal counsel, in answer to the questions that were put to our legal counsel, she has, she has no, no issues with, with the petitions or with the proposed, uh, ordinance the way it's written. And I have no problem with sending the, with approving them. And then deal with it again later in the fall when we have to rewrite it. But to approve them now, to show people that we are indeed, you know, wanting to work with people who wanna make changes. She had nothing in here that, uh, I mean, on a couple of things, yes, we have grounds to, we could reject, but they would be petty and, and I think ridiculous. So, you know, my, my recommendation is that we approve them and let them go to the ballot and then form the committee and rewrite it because we're gonna have to anyway. But in the meantime, we will have these to work with.
And this is August. And.
Three months.
Yeah.
Well, two months, two and a half months, three months.
I'm still the opinion, have a committee, do it complete, concise, correct. And why walk over the same ground twice? Get it done once, get it done right.
Do we have any other discussion? So, we're looking at November fourth. What is the title of the citizens petition? I just call it citizens petition. If I can keep track of paperwork.
Petition for town meeting receivable.
There's actually three of them.
Right.
One is on the construction integrity and home rule amendment. Livermore Falls farming and forestry freedom amendment. Livermore Falls electrical code independence and state permitting alignment.
So. We have multiple ones. I'll make the motion to send the Livermore Falls farming and forestry freedom amendment to development, to standards ordinance, to out to vote on November fourth.
I second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Three to two. I made the motion to send it down on November fourth, the Livermore Falls construction integrity and home rule amendment to the development standards ordinance.
I second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Three in favor, all was opposed, two opposed. What was the name of the third one?
I think it's that one, is it that one or is it this one?
Yes, that one. I moved to send it to the ballot on November fourth, the Livermore Falls electrical code independence and state permitting alignment amendment.
I second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Three opposed, two opposed. Those will be on the ballot for November fourth. I congratulate the people that did the work, collecting signatures is not easy. And we'll move forward from here.
So just in summary, we're gonna have this on the ballot on the fourth. Then we're gonna turn around and have a committee to rewrite it.
Yes, well, to rewrite possibly, yes, possibly, depending on how the state goes.
State could, the state could withdraw what they've already voted on too, I mean, that could happen. So that might not even happen, it's, it's happened, but it could get withdrawn.
So I, is it ideal? No, is this how we'd like to do it? No, but.
Legally, there's not much we can do about it.
This is the process. And there may have been some things that we could have nitpicked, but it didn't seem like they were enough, not in my opinion. So, that's why I voted the way I voted.
Don't have to substantiate that.
That's all right, that's all right. I do not mind. I usually say exactly what I'm, what I'm gonna do anyway.
I've, I've been known to do the same.
All right, up next, we have the local plumber, uh, local plumbing inspector and a local agreement. So you had some changes with the shiloh and what, the mileage and.
Yeah. It wasn't going in the hour rate, so. We amended that and based on the discussion we had with Jeff and, I can't remember who else, Bruce. I don't remember, anyway, it was a while ago, so, yeah. Everybody was in a ring. So I just need a motion from the folks to have me sign it.
I move to have the town manager sign the local plumbing inspector and a local agreement.
I second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Five, none opposed. Good judge. Up next, we have new business, we have the solar lease agreement. This is for the one down on Diamond Road.
So, again, um, town's attorney has worked through this rather meaty document. I had a meeting with, um, the gentleman that owns Ion Renewables on Zoom with, with their representative and, and our attorney as well, agreed on a lease, lease amount with, um, the escalator built in. And, um, it's ready for signature so it can go through the planning board process. They are working on the permitting and the design.
We're working on.
The permitting and the design.
Ion Renewables, correct.
You folks have had a chance to read this rather dense document. Just looking for approval to sign this as well.
What, uh, I probably should know this, but what is going to be the, uh, is it gonna be monthly that they're gonna be paying or?
Um, I, I don't honestly remember, I know it's a twenty-year term with, um, options for extension beyond. Like I said, I think it's, I don't remember the percentage built in, um, flat percentage and then there's also escalators.
Now, where it's gonna be on town property, they're leasing it, will we, there will be still some taxable value in the equipment. I know it, it's pretty low, it's like, what, fifty percent of the value, it's something like that? But there still will be some taxable value there on top of us leasing a piece of property that cannot be used for anything else due to the hazardous nature of what's underneath the ground. So, it should be a win-win for the town, really.
All right, are there any credits towards power bills included?
We already have a solar, uh, agreement with a community solar company that we, we're engaged in. I had somebody that's working on the energy audit, I had her review that and she just said it's actually a very good, good agreement. She recommended we stick with them.
That's a very good.
Good agreement that we have with, um.
So other than lease fees, there will be some power benefits?
With the lease from Ion Renewables, no?
No.
No, we signed, what, two years ago with the solar, with another thing? And that was what, was that for fifteen years?
No, that's a yearly renewal.
Oh, okay. Didn't work at the fifteen years.
It renews every August.
Okay. All right. So, with all that discussion, I move that we approve the solar lease agreement with Ion Renewables. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, and for the discussion, all those in favor? Five in favor, opposed, none opposed? Up next, we have bylaws for boards and committees. We were gonna, wanted to bring this up because there's some discussion about bringing in line with how we handle our meetings with some of the other committees.
This is the document that we signed in January of twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, we just went through it a little while ago. But one of the things that I was hoping to look into, I don't see the, the chair or anybody, I see Gail is here and Bill, was looking into bringing in line how we set our agendas. There's no thing, no definite way as far as this in our bylaws of how the planning board sets their agenda. For us, it's, I speak with the town manager and you guys, you know, ask if you wanna have anything put on. The town manager and the chair, uh, set the agenda from there and put it forward. And I would like to see something like that for the, for the planning board. And possibly for any other committees. Right?
The budget committee.
Right, that may, you know, just to give everybody a guideline so everybody knows what to expect. And there's no if, ands, or buts.
Well, level playing field.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, just like you said, I'd, I'd like to see it broad in line with what we do. And just, you know, that seems to work pretty well for us, I think, I feel like it is. I don't know how everybody else feels, but.
Well, I think it would eliminate confusion and frustration. And I think there should be something in there, but on many occasions, as on this board, where the chair or the town manager has asked to make a motion to amend the agenda to include something that has recently presented itself that isn't on the agenda and we have been very amenable to that. And I think that that should go to the other committees. That is something, you know, not with the budget, but so much as with the planning board, that if something should arise, that should be addressed sooner than the following board, uh, planning board meeting, that the agenda could be amended to include it. And that way, it's dealt with and not put on a back burner and possibly forgotten. So I mean, if we could have a codicil added to this for that, for that purpose, where agendas can be, can be amended at the time of the meeting to incorporate something that needs to be addressed, because there's nothing in this that has that.
So Bruce, if I'm hearing you correctly, so on page two, under the section four agenda, you would like to add a bullet point there. I assume you would like it under public hearings, we could have a regular standing agenda item adjustments to the agenda. Can I hear it not correctly?
Yes. So right after public hearings, we maybe pop one of that, pop that in there? And then as far as the other one goes, under four agenda, we could, instead of saying for select board meetings, we could just.
All boards?
We could.
All boards and committees.
Right, we could change that, would that solve that?
If you look at the last sentence in that first paragraph, it says for other boards and committee meetings, the chair shall, together with staff, set the agenda for each meeting. So do you wanna change that to something else?
No, that one covers it. But as long as the chair of whatever committee or whatever board understands that the, the agenda can be amended by suggestion and by vote of the rest of the members, just like we do. If it's good for us, it's good for them.
Well, that can just be a sentence at the end. Amending the agenda can be added to by majority vote at that set meeting?
I'm okay with however it's put in there, as long as it's put in there.
Correct.
I think that will eliminate a great deal of consternation.
With that, I make a motion that we table six point two bylaws and of boards and committees until the corrections have been updated.
I second that.
Discussion, all those in favor? All in favor, any opposed, none opposed? Yeah, so I suppose under that, it really answers my question, it just.
I try to be helpful.
Yes. Alright, up next we have the main municipality association executive committee ballot.
So this is just the slate of officers at main municipal associations, we do this every year. So for vice president, uh, they're nominating Anthony Ward, the Casco town manager, and three committee members. The executive committee, Phil Crowell, the Auburn city manager, Suzette Francis, the Ruback town administrator, and Mark Leonard, the leasing town manager and police chief.
I move that we endorse the proposed, the proposed M N A nominating committee. Anthony Ward, Phil Crowell, Suzette Francis, and Mark Leonard.
I'll second that. Discussion, all those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?
I mean, this is, this, this is a broad coverage of the state.
Can't go much further, you start.
Alright, up next we have the FEMA grant, the Horace Bridge.
So, remember way, way, way back, when we started talking about this bridge out on, um, Strip Eleven Road, we got a, we call it a bad bridge letter. Saying there were some significant structural deficiencies with the bridge. So I decided to approach, um, main E M A about this, um, together with, um, our local E M A, the, um, Lewiston. And so we actually received funding, uh, we have a federal award of forty seven thousand one hundred fifty dollars and twenty one cents. Which is seventy five percent of the total, sixty three thousand two hundred seventy seven dollars and sixty two cents. This would be for, um, design and engineering of our replacement bridge over there. It includes the hydrology study, preliminary design, construction permitting, the final design, and I don't remember what B C A is, but anyway, um. So the bugaboo of this is, um, we do have to provide a twenty five percent match of fifteen thousand eight hundred eighteen dollars and forty one cents if we accept this award. The alternative is, uh, long-term to dead-end the road on both sides of the bridge? Or, um, move forward with, with this somehow?
The long-term effect of not providing the twenty five percent along with what you just said is the bridge collapsing.
Well, we shut it down before that, yeah, we closed it, and just dead-end the road on that.
And how would that affect people using that, that roadway?
Um, they would just have to turn around and go the other way.
Let's see, it's a loop road, so. People would have access, but it wouldn't be convenient.
Yeah, it would, it would be two dead ends.
Wouldn't be a loop anymore, right?
That's in a part of town I'm not familiar with, how would that affect people at that end, at that end of the community?
Um, well, the bridges, if you think about it like this, the bridge is almost in the middle of one direction and the other direction, it's fairly close. But, you know, if, if you're coming into town, if you live down here, you're gonna have to travel another quarter of a mile. Probably be inconvenient for buses to, that pick people up on that loop, mail, things like that, because you'd have to go down, turn around, come all the way back out and go back in.
Plowing?
Plowing, yes.
Emergency vehicles, what if they get the wrong, wrong address and they're overrun then, they, they gotta go all the way back around? Instead of going right across the bridge, I would think, could happen, I suppose.
How long do we have to come up with the twenty five percent?
Um, that's a good question, I do not know the answer to that.
It's worth a good eight grand.
Yeah, it's fifteen thousand, so.
Can, can we table this until you find out that information?
So we do have, I believe it's about eighty one or eighty two thousand dollars in that capital improvement reserve, like I'm looking at Sharon.
Yeah, there was some money in there, I think that would more than cover it.
Yeah, we do have some money available, I, um, I'm not super crazy about spending that, but I hate to also give up almost forty eight thousand dollars for it.
Too, too bad, Chip, you're covered. Now, is this just for the engineering?
This is just for the engineering, because it's, it's crossing a stream, so it has to be engineered, because it ultimately will be over, well over a hundred thousand dollars. The two, uh, proposals that I've talked with, um, preliminarily with engineers was anything from a twenty-two foot, um, honest to goodness bridge to a very large box cover. And of course, the price difference between the dollars is, um, about a million bucks, so.
Yeah.
Either way, it's gonna be a few or several hundred thousand dollars. Of which, you know, if we go through this process, we will be eligible for more FEMA money for the actual construction.
How long does the bridge have to be for the O G to take it over?
Uh, twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
Yeah.
Puts it now, or about?
Fourteen.
Yeah.
Fourteen, but it has to be bank, one and a half bank full width, so it's gonna be on the upper end, so.
Ask a question?
Do you have a question?
So, that's not to actually fix the bridge, that's just to get the engineering and a plan, okay?
Correct.
Okay.
We need to find a way to come up with fifteen thousand. Because seventy five percent's coming from another source.
Well, then we still have to, even after that, we'll have to come up with money to, to.
Just drive.
Add two or three years down the road, probably.
Can we, uh, get a breakdown of the finances a little bit first before we make the decision on this, or?
Uh, what?
Like, well, you said we had eighty one thousand, it's, we're in a kind of a crunch with finances right now, obviously, with what we're dealing with. It would be nice to authorize the fifteen thousand so we can move forward with it, but is the money there to authorize, is the question?
Well, like I said, I know we have, I, I don't remember if it's eighty one or eighty two thousand and change in the capital improvement reserve account.
This is considered a capital improvement.
Very much so. That would be the only pot of money that we have currently set aside that we could draw from.
I have option to take fifteen thousand out of eighty one, I think.
Do it.
I'm trying to think, I had to say, I'm not, quick thinking. I make a motion, we take fifteen thousand for this project out of the capital reserve account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we, can we amend that to fifteen thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars and forty one cents?
Oh, I heard it was fifteen thousand, you gotta come up with a rest yourself, lady.
It was about fifteen thousand eight hundred and what?
Eight hundred and eighteen dollars and forty one cents.
Eight hundred and nineteen dollars.
I will amend my motion as spoken.
I second the amendment.
Any discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Four in favor, one opposed. Alright, up next, we have Apple Pumpkin Festival Special Amusement. Do we have anybody here from the Apple Pumpkin Festival? Don't think so.
Uh, I'd like to ask on, on the application, the signature of applicant has C Castangie. I'd like to know who the C is. It is you, okay.
Yeah, I was in a hurry, I told Bob, um, Barry, I would do it for him, and I needed to get it in the packet.
I move that we approve the special amusement permit application for the Apple Pumpkin Festival waiving, is it the registration fee?
Yes.
Waiving the registration fee, seeing that it is a nonprofit.
I'll second that. Discussion, all those in favor? None opposed? Passes. Up next we have map twenty lot two twenty nine.
So you, I'm sure don't remember, because we talked about these, I think, this property back in, where is it? Or so, this was one of the foreclosed properties that you decided to table until July first.
Yeah.
Uh, because it was occupied at the time, um, the person that was living in there, um, has found other housing, she's in the process of moving out. It is an estate, and the, uh, her legal counsel has asked us to move forward with disposing of the property with a broker and setting the excess funds to treasury and custody for dispersment. Because they do not have a personal representative that's, uh, settling the estate.
Alright, so we're looking at listing this with the real estate?
So if I could get, uh, permission from you folks to list this with the broker that the town has under contract as of September first.
And she has some alternative housing?
She has.
Okay. So we're not putting anybody on the street? I move that we allow the town manager to place this with our, with our realtor. Map twenty lot two twenty nine.
Which is Sill Street.
I'll second that. Discussion, all those in favor? Five in favor, none opposed? Alright, up next we have warrants of evans deeds and quitclaim, like, um, I mean, under the mix of pile. Up first we have seven one payroll warrant, number twenty nine, the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred twenty nine dollars forty five cents. Number thirty, the amount of thirty five thousand four hundred sixty three dollars and seventy nine cents. Number thirty one, the amount of thirty three thousand fourteen dollars and thirty eight cents. I'll second. All those in favor? None opposed? Up next we have general fund warrant, number eighty, twenty three thousand six hundred ninety nine dollars and ninety four cents. Number eighty one, two thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars. And number one, for seven hundred seventy eight thousand one hundred and four dollars and forty five cents. Number two, the amount of twenty three thousand, uh, twenty nine dollars and seven cents. I'll second, I second, discussion, all those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Up next we have quitclaim deeds, map twenty lot thirty.
So this is, yeah, so all of, all of these are properties that were in foreclosure and have either been, um, sold or the owners have, um, paid, and we just need to quitclaim them back to them.
I move that we quitclaim back the prob- the deeds for the properties at map twenty lot thirty, map seventeen lot eleven, zero zero seven, zero oh n. Map seven lot thirty nine, map twenty one lot one oh five, map eighteen lot one twenty, map twenty lot eighteen.
Seconded.
Discussion, all those in favor? Five in favor, none opposed? Up next we have board discussion. Do we have any? Not seeing any board discussion, any managers discussion?
So I have just one thing, um, the plans and specs, I did finally, finally, finally get those from Plymouth Engineering. They are up on the town's website as PDFs, uh, with a bid due date of September second at one P M, uh, in a sealed bid, and it will be opened by yours truly, uh, after we are ready.
Alright, that's it? Thank you.
Department heads.
Yes, well, department heads. Uh, Doris.
I have some great news. As you guys know, we have a couple of new businesses in town, and one of them is Dina, she does the events up here. She has stepped forward and has, and Dina is right up there, she has stepped forward and she is making it possible for us to have, have a farmer's market.
Yay.
This is great news, she has all the insurances necessary, she already has, last I knew, nine people to do this.
Eighteen.
Eighteen people to do this. We've got the okay already for outback, um, I've talked to Jocelyn, so the gazebo and the area outback is available. And we, I think, are all ready to go on Thursday.
It's gonna be Thursday, the fourteenth is gonna be our first one, if everybody approves that.
Yeah, and what time?
Four to six.
Four to six, right outback.
Four, four P M?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Well, the farmers, farmers get up early, you know?
So there's gonna be a nice variety, um, there's some crafts.
We have some crafts, we have vendors, we also have three farms coming down, um, I am in the processing register with the state of Maine as the farmer's market, and you're representative for here. Um, all of my vendors already have insurance privately, and I have inv- I have vendor insurance for myself covering them. Does the town need anything else as far as that goes, and what, what else do we? Is it?
Sounds, sounds like you've got the insurances and stuff, and everything's cleared.
That was a holdup the last time, so.
Yeah, insurance is a pain. Costs a lot, too.
Mm-hmm.
There will be a ten dollar fee for the vendors, and that will go back to covering any insurance costs I have to cover on my end, and then five dollars of every. And then five dollars of every time that someone pays will go into beautifying our, our town. And I will give that to the town and once we get a nice accumulation, if you tell me what we wanna focus on, I have handymen and everybody that I hire and they'll come in and repair someone's steps or go in and paint their porch, you know, go, go take care of your pavilion and do new stairs or help with a handicap ramp. Anything like that. They do it volunteer wise and they love to log hours. So anything you guys need in the town, please stop by the shop and let me know. Anything personalized, we do screen printing, anything you guys need, so just come on by and let us know. I also have a license to show movies outside. That is good until twenty twenty-eight. Um, I have an outdoor movie theater that I can do at any time. I do not charge for that. Um, it will be just a community outreach. Um, it will be for donation only. I have popcorn, cotton candy, snow cones, and twelve other vendors that will set up to sell wares of goods. If that's ever happens, I just need to get a license. What license would I get through you guys? What town, what one of your town, small gathering or?
amusement.
Amusement, nothing? Okay.
What did you say the five dollars was for? Dina and I didn't hear.
It's gonna be ten dollars. Five dollars is gonna go to me for covering insurance for vendors who don't have it, that I will cover. And then, um, the other five will go back into a fund beautifying community.
Okay.
So my tagline for my business is bringing community together one event at a time. In the back, I teach workshops, seniors, everything. I already had like three hundred community members come in. They didn't know how to FaceTime their grandkids and they came in the back and we showed them how and now they come in and they can video from here to North Carolina and they haven't seen one of their grandkids, so it was really great. So anything like that, just let us know and also Ernie, I appreciate you. Your patch is almost ready.
My stickers came out great.
And your stickers are good. So as far as the movie goes, uh, do you have a place that I could put that at or where would I get permission? Is it at the pavilion?
We could probably do the side of the building right out here. We'll figure something out.
Yeah.
I, I was just gonna ask, could that movie thing be worked into the Apple Pumpkin Festival somehow? I know the Apple Pumpkin Festival is during the day and maybe that evening, there could be a movie honoring pumpkins or something.
Well, no, during the, during the, um, history night, they were showing, they were showing the movie, The Town That Moved a Mountain. And a lot of us haven't seen that movie. I have, it was good. But, you know, it's, it's how Spruce Mountain began Spruce Mountain. And I think a lot of people who are new to the community may not know that.
And Spruce Mountain isn't that diesel process?
Yeah, that's what they're, that they moved the mountain.
Yeah, they moved it to their, from.
A whole lot of people picked up and.
Was that what I said?
Okay, well, I just put on a farmer's market. I'm not moving any mountains.
Okay, so I guess my question answered, yes. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Um, we have a blood drive, uh, August eighteenth. Ten? Yeah, it is ten to two. Um, that'll be right here. Um, there's plenty of room to sign up. I know we just had one two months ago and a lot of people do it every third month. So please feel free if you wanna be a first time donor or, um, if it's time for, you know, a little burst of energy. Um, we also have the garden out back. We have been getting some cucumbers, kale, radishes. Um, the pumpkin, we have a couple pumpkins doing really good, um, squash. Yeah, feel free, go down there. We have a nice setup. Benches, there's a picnic table. Grab a, grab a lunch. Have on a, I have Italian down back or something.
Fresh ingredients.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, people going by, they, you know, they're all nice. They walk in their dog, say hi, meet somebody new. It's great.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Doris. That's some really good news. I'm excited about it. That would be good for the community.
I think so too. We all need a fresh food.
Tammy, do you have anything for us?
Just formally, cause I've been getting a lot of phone calls about the sewer bills, they used to them going out by now. Um, they will go out as soon as we can get them to go out. I'm hoping that will be on August fourteenth. Um, the holdup is just waiting for the article to pass. So if it passes, they will go out. If not, it will just be delayed a little bit longer.
Okay.
So we have to set sewer rate, interest rate before, to go on the bill before we can set it up.
Okay.
You reduce that from eight to five, right?
Correct.
Is that everything? Anything else? I don't think we have any other department heads here. Um, then we move on to the public comment. Yes, John?
Just wondering if like the select board and the planning boards sent a business retention letter to like Hammond? You know, maybe offering some tax abatements or some sort of improvements through TIF or something to maybe encourage them to keep the business here instead of sending it to D C W. And the other question is just how long before the bridge collapses? Probably a bridge on the Stricklands Loop. I know it seemed like there was a sense of urgency, but if you've got another ten years on the bridge, I don't know if it's quite so urgent. Just because engineering costs, first and actually building costs, is what's gonna happen. They're gonna say, well, we did the engineering plans, but you have to use them within eight months because if you don't, then they're gonna expire. Now you gotta come up with three hundred or half million dollars to do the construction. So now you're gonna be raising taxes and doing all kinds of stuff to scramble around to get more money that we don't have. So just maybe something. So those are the only two things that I have. And besides, it's awesome, it's about the business thing. That's great, especially the farmer's markets.
Yeah, anybody can come by the shop and sign up or do anything online too. They have to verify their insurance and stuff through me before they can go with their bid.
And they just find you online, correct?
Yep, they come right to the shop right here at, on fourteen Eco Street right there and sign up. And then we also have our website. I'll be putting it on there too. It's vincefiedena.shop.
Okay, it's two doors up from the truck wagon. You can't miss it. It's beautiful.
Thanks.
Thank you, John. We have, and any other public comment? You have anything to say? No?
Like, wait, what?
You got the ball.
They can't be any worse than the rest of us, though, don't worry.
He would just let you know he'd rather, he'd like to go home now and have his dessert.
Well, that's, sounds about like us.
Which is already twenty-five times.
Yeah, that sounds good too. So I'm not seeing any other public comment. We have no executive session.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second that.